I could call the Tuesday, October 1st, 2019 study session to order. Madam Clark, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear?
President.
Commissioner Walls?
President.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins?
Here.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Howell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Be present.
Thank you. Entertained a motion for approval of the September 3rd, 2019 minutes.
Remove.
We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments? Deletions or additions? Seeing our hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we're at the annual report for the drain commissioner.
Just get public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have public comment first. I apologize. Sorry about that. Any public comment? I didn't see our public. I thought it was my problem was. Any public comment? Seeing our hearing done, we shall go on to item five, the annual report of the drain commissioner. Jeffrey Snyder.
Commissioners, Madam Clark, Deb, good morning. You've all been presented, I believe, with the annual report. It's rather lengthy. That's required by the statute. Requires every commissioner to provide to the Board of Commissioners at their annual meeting. All drainage districts laid out, full financial statements for each county drain, itemized statements for all drain orders that are written. Takes up a bulk of it. The past year, 2017, was very busy.
Thank you.
Due to the amount of rainfall and snowmelt that we experienced, combined with the amount of development that is reoccurring in the county. There were 18... On page 18, there were one platte filed, reviewed and filed by this office, one condominium. We had 30 proposed developments situated in Blackman, Concord, Grass Lake, Leonie, Norville, Spring Ivory, Springport, Summit, Waterloo. Had 21 drains maintained at $170,500. Six dam projects, maintenance projects. Five new road projects that required review outside of the JCDOT projects. There were 93 service requests from my office that were non-drain related, county drain related. And the MPDS permit requirements, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permits, we've accomplished since 1985, the removal of 11,592 tons of pollutants. Kept it out of the Grand River. So that'll be an ongoing score. That's the highlights of the annual report. Are there any questions of the report itself?
Mr. Howell?
Jeff, I had received a call here a couple of weeks ago, or maybe more, from a couple constituents about, I think it's the Noon Drain.
Yes, sir.
Is that still ongoing, or?
The construction will be completed this year. The special assessment rules have been circulated to all. Day review of apportionment of percentages for each of the property owners was conducted as a result of that involvement, the due process involvement required by the statute. There were a couple changes made to the assessment rules. Those are finalized. The 10-day period for appeal has lapsed, and the project should commence first of this coming month.
To your knowledge, have those constituents been satisfied, do you think, the couple that I heard from?
You'll never receive full satisfaction when government has its hand in the pocket of a constituent by way of a special assessment. But I believe they have been convinced that the method utilized in apportioning the assessments against the properties was the fairest that could be implemented.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Any other commissioner questions? Mr. Williams?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I know it may not be, or at least I didn't see it, as a part of your presentation. Maybe I overlooked it, but nevertheless, I believe that we have some individuals that are looking at the issue at Cascades, and I was just wondering if there was any continued conversation.
There is. Wasn't covered in my annual report because it's happening this year. But the...that my office is involved. We have received a resolution from the city asking for assistance. The resolution is not quite what's necessary to trigger a drain project, but nevertheless, since we have an established district, we're going forward with a study that would answer the questions of this board, should it desire to petition for a project, or the constituents themselves. Basically, we have water on Randolph and...
Douglas.
Douglas, west of West Avenue. Our preliminary findings show that there is an outlet through the Cascade Lagoons and the channel that outlets those lagoons through the golf course. The question remains whether tackling a project which would lower the water surface elevation of the lagoons and cleaning out the channel to allow that to happen, whether that would remedy the constituents' problems in their basement. There is a storm sewer owned by the city that runs down the length of Douglas Street, drains the storm sewer system from roughly the Bloomfield area to the south, up towards West Ira High Street on the north. That is a rather shallow storm sewer. It's about five and a half feet deep. The basements, obviously, are at least six feet. So we are fighting a groundwater table. Cascade School, for example, ran pumps continuously to keep that water out of the auditorium. So there are groundwater problems that need to be analyzed. I believe that that analysis will result in a project for which we'll estimate the cost, provide the alternatives to either the petitioners of the property owners, this board or the city. Will also have available at that time, a proposed apportionment of those costs.
But do you know approximately how long the study would take?
The surveyors have been out, documented the elevations of the city storm sewer. They are analyzing the problems with the basements, and that should be completed within the next 30, 45 days.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we need action now, or are you going to take it Tuesday night? See this? Yes. Okay. This will be moving to the full board meeting for Tuesday night, everyone. Airport Restaurant Lease.
Morning Commissioners. Next to me, I have Anthony Riddle. He's the prospective new owner of the restaurant at the airport. We're here this morning to try and get the lease approved for the restaurant. That will be a five-year lease with three five-year renewals. And Anthony Riddle is expected to do quite a bit of improvements to the restaurant and keep it open, which is a critical part of the airport operations. Does anybody have any questions on the lease itself?
Tony?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Reading through it, I see that there's a couple mentions to the air conditioning equipment in the building, and that the restaurant will utilize that air conditioning without cost. There's some mention about sanitary drain. I saw no mention about electricity. Are we providing it, or is the leasing having their own? Same thing with the heat, Wi-Fi, water? I didn't see those addressed. How are those being handled?
Correct. The restaurant will be paying for their own electric bill and the gas bill to heat the water for the restaurant. The airport pays for the heating for the building, including the restaurant, and that is taken into account in the bill. So right now, the restaurant owner owns everything inside the restaurant. The airport and the county own all the facilities around it. And so we maintain and operate the air conditioners and the boiler system also. And therefore, that's not something that the restaurant will be in charge of maintaining or operating. And so we take that into account when we charge the monthly bill.
For clarity in the lease, is it...do you think it's important to have it noted that they're responsible for their own electrical bill and their own gas bill?
It is listed in the lease. I'm not quite sure which of the paragraphs it is, but we have specified in there that the restaurant pays for the electric bill and that the airport will pay for the heating of the restaurant. Same thing with the water. It's a well system, and it's listed in the lease that in the event that we go to city water, then the restaurant will be paying for their own water bill at that time. Right now, the restaurant pays for the water testing and for the actual salt that's used in the water, but we pay for everything else, including maintaining the well. It's a similar arrangement that was being done with the previous restaurant owner, where they actually pay for all the electric and gas for operating the restaurant. The only thing that the county's paying for is the heating of the building, because it's a boiler system, and it's not an easy thing to separate the heating system.
Mr. Chair. Okay. I was confused by, "Laser agrees to provide suitable gas and water in the area hereby leased and will cause suitable metering provided for electricity."
Right. We provide the metering.
Administrator Overton?
It is. It's spelled out in item eight, gas, water, and electric. Don't yet where it is, right there. I think you're probably looking at that one there. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, agrees...Lesor agrees that it will furnish such heat to lease during the term of the lease. That sort of thing, right there. "Laser shall pay the total expense for such gas, electricity, except for utilities used for heating purposes as described below." So.
All right. Followed down that? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And this is really for the new owner there, because I was a little surprised that you were not in favor of taking care of the bathrooms. And the reason I ask the question is, maybe it's just me personally, but when I go to a restaurant, one of the things, I hate to say it this way, but one of the things I'd kind of judge the restaurant on is the bathrooms. I mean, if the bathrooms are dirty, I assume that the areas I can't see are probably equally worse, you know, or something. So that's why I was like, you have a vested interest in those bathrooms, in my mind.
I had a few issues with that. Typical restrooms inside of a restaurant are inside that restaurant. This one, however, is not. Those are, I assume, public restrooms out there, right? Since June, I would go into the restaurant, sit, and I would watch.
The restroom.
I would go into those restrooms several times a day. Over that course of time, I've seen people go in there and change their underwear, leave them on the floor, and they're dirty, like they messed themselves. I want no part of that.
I believe those are community restrooms, are they not?
Yeah, they're actually just outside the restaurant. They're the only restrooms, though, if I believe, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I suppose the fact that you're going in there and taking a look at them, that's a good start, and then if there's a major problem, obviously, you'll speak with management about it, I'm sure.
Further questions? Entertained a motion to approve the lease?
Remove. Support.
We have a motion in support. Any further questions? Yes, he'll take care of everything. He's got the lease right here for me to sign upon completion of this vote. Darius?
I may have overlooked this as well, but was there a term limit on the lease?
Three fives.
Fives? Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Five and then three extensions. Correct. Any further questions? Past 8-0. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. Item seven, agenda policy, for discussion. Mister Overton?
Thank you. Couple of months ago, the board asked me to look at how we establish our agendas, and we have. We've called a number of communities. To be honest with you, at first, I was like, establish an agenda? I know at least one or two of you had asked me, you know, I don't know, some weeks prior. And I'm like, well, you know, we just, you know, a couple of us get together and blah, blah, blah. And in all honesty, that is not correct. It kind of feels like that sometimes, but it is not. The current policy is pretty clear that the chair and/or myself establish the agenda. And I'm like, okay, now, why is that? Let's look at, what is everyone else doing? Because it's one of those things that I've been a city or county manager for 27 years, and it's never come up as a real issue. So it's like, okay, what's going on here? Why? How does everyone do it? Well, lo and behold, I come to find out that everyone does it pretty much the way we do it. Chairs, prerogative. I did find Alligan has something a little different. They have a section on their agenda every meeting that says future agenda, and they all vote on what will or will not be. I called to see, to talk to them over there about that. I was like, well, you guys are an anomaly. What's going on? What's different about your community? What's different is there isn't anything different. They're all of the same mind. They're all seven, the same political party. They're all, and they're likely to change, and that's kind of how they've done it that way. But by and large, the vast majority is the chair. And the reason it's been the chair, in my own personal opinion, is, one, it's simple. You know, the chair sets the agenda. Usually, he or she is available to speak with. You elect your chair as someone to represent the county. Generally, the chair is someone who you believe has the ability, the understanding of the community, of the organization itself, and of the wants and desires of the county commissioners, that sort of information. And then this person is given that authority to determine the agenda. Now, of course, any commissioner who has something they are interested in seeing discussed at a board meeting, obviously, the idea would be that they would speak to the chair about that, and assuming he or she agreed, that it would make it on the agenda. There are other ways of doing it, not that I know of any counties necessarily using them, but, I mean, from a straight legal stance, Roberts Rules of Orders does allow for people to motion and second and vote things onto an agenda. I mean, clearly, that's possible. There is, it's your rules. You could change them to suit the board. You could change it to, any one commissioner could just, you know, say, I want something on the agenda, and then therefore, I would put it on the agenda. Obviously, there's challenges, you know, with that. Any one person wanting, it doesn't mean anyone else may desire to discuss that particular item at all. Some things can be controversial, period. Just the fact you put them on your agenda can make them controversial. Well, no, they're already controversial. Just the fact you put them on your agenda may cause potential conflict and harm in the community for not a good reason to have that on here, maybe something beyond the scope of the county's ability to address. But same token, you could say, okay, well, you know, it's just, we need three people or even a majority to put something on the air. Again, some of the challenges with that, it adds complexity. You will find, at least I believe, that there would probably end up being some horse trading going on. I think that happens a lot in the larger, like, land, state and federal government, horse trading, what gets on the agenda. You approve this, and I'll approve that, and so forth. Those kind of problems that can be addressed. But to be frank and honest with you guys, I think what we have has worked for a long time, and apparently is what's working for other communities, and I'd recommend you leave it the same. But obviously, it's the board's prerogative. Questions?
That works as long as every commissioner's heard, and if they have a valid request to put something on the agenda, that it's truly considered. I haven't had that issue, but we have another commissioner up here that seems to have had issue with it, so I'm not so certain that it has worked 100%.
So in that case, let's walk through that, Cory. We decide that there's an issue we want to talk about chewing gum in Jackson County. And a majority of the board doesn't want to talk about chewing gum, but two commissioners want to. So that would mean, under our current rules, they would make a motion and get a second, and then the opportunity would be either for the chair to redirect that to the Administrator Controller's Office, for him to put together his neutral paper, you know, the facts, whether or not people should chew gum in Jackson County or not, and then present that to the board. And we come back at the next meeting. So there is a tool, if there's two commissioners, that want to talk about an item. Now, you have to remember, though, also, under the modified Roberts Rules that we use, if you postpone something to a date specific, you're going to get an answer. If you table something, it's going to take a two-thirds majority of the board to lift it back off the table, and that still doesn't mean that the administration's even had a chance to review it. All that means is that you've tabled a discussion. So we want to make sure, and this is what we've done in the past, and that's why we're talking about this now, is that you want to be able to postpone things with date-specific time, where staff can have time to look everything up and come back with the answer, whether it be good, bad, or indifferent. And I agree with you that it could be utilized by the chair to not talk about stuff, but from what I understand, that's the chair's prerogative, and you have a vote to get rid of him every January, or her. So that would be something for everyone to consider. On that, I know that all of the different boards and authorities that I serve on representing the county, the chairman goes over the board packet prior to the meeting, and sees it and agrees with what should be on the agenda and what should not be on the agenda. Commissioner Howell?
I'm supportive of leaving it the way it is. I appreciate the detail that Mike went to with what he reported to us and the research that he did. And you gave a simple example of chewing gum. I can think of a better example that we did have before us, and my recollection was that there were a vast majority of commissioners that didn't see the need to bring it to the full board for a presentation or discussion, and that was the potential lawsuit against the drug makers. And I don't know who brought it to the administrator, and that doesn't matter, but Mike and the chair saw value in us discussing that. And after the presentation, it went nowhere, because there were not a majority of commissioners that wanted to talk about that. But we still went through it, and I'm okay with that, because they saw value in it. I don't want to get bogged down in minutia of, well, I don't want you to get bogged down in some individual thing that I may have, that I want to bring here that nobody else supports. And I, again, think that is why we elect a chair, and we hire Mike to bring those issues before us on the agenda, and if there's something that is above and beyond for somebody, they can go talk with those two and try and get it on the agenda, I guess, and they can rustle up another commissioner and make a vote if need be. But I think what we do have works. It's worked for the 18 years or the 17 years that I've been here, and I support continuing doing it the same way.
I guess I support leaving it as it currently exists. We do, one item that I like to put out for consideration is that I like everything on the printed agenda ahead of time, rather than just brought up from the floor and added. Every single meeting, I send an email to township officials that I represent, letting them know what agenda items are going to appear, give them the opportunity to give me some personal feedback or shore up themselves if they choose to speak during the public comment time. So I definitely prefer to have everything on the agenda and not added at the last moment. Understand, yes, there are emergencies that could come up. We'd have to add something. But I like the system the way it is currently. Thank you. Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a number of concerns with this. I think that, first out, I'd like the record to reflect that the most dangerous statement that an organization can make is, this is the way we've always done it. That is a dangerous statement for an organization to make, to be complacent and not recognizing that the way that it currently stands is okay, because Republicans are in the majority. I think that if the tables were turned, then there would be a little bit more recognition that this is not a fair process. I mean, this very instance, this situation, to me, is a prime example that this is not a fair process, because the ask was for the administrator to come back with some options, not a recommendation and no options, but options and then a recommendation. As of right now, there's no other options even being presented, and I appreciate the research that was done, but where are the options at? Because that's what we were told was going to come back, is options of how else we could do it, and then a recommendation by the administrator. But what we're getting is a recommendation to leave it the way it is.
Any further commissioner comments? Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I misunderstood your...
Commissioner Mahoney, would you yourself have any alternative suggestions?
I don't, because, again, I was under the impression that the administrator would be coming back to the board with recommendations. I'm sorry, with some options, you know, and I understand that his recommendation is just what he thinks is best for the board, but the ask was to come back with some options and a recommendation, and that's not what's been done here.
Commissioner Bear?
Looking at the email that I presume we all got, we all received...
Looking at the email that I presume we all got, we all received from Administrator, talking about how we've done this. Other possible ways of determining what goes on agenda are, one could use Roberts Rules of Order, next paragraph, one could allow any one Commissioner to add, next paragraph, one could require three or more Commissioners to concur. I think we do have options. Do any of these that were presented as email look more attractive to anybody?
I think, I'm sorry.
Darius?
I think for me, as it relates to Commissioner Baer's comments, for me personally, if we had, at least had the option, or continue with the option, I guess I should say, with at least two to three Commissioners to bring something to the agenda, me personally, I would feel comfortable with that notion because it at least gives us the option to at least voice to our communities, to those that we represent, that we're at least trying to make an effort in any advancement or and/or changes that are needed in the respective districts that we represent.
Any other Commissioner comments? Moving on to other items. Administrator Overton, could you go over EEE, please, with the Board?
Sure. Thank you. This, we've known about this, oh, last few weeks, it's been a particular, at the forefront. I think the state has been aware of it back into June or for sure July. A few weeks ago, when we've had the issues here, it came to our attention. And it's something that's very rare, although yet people do get it and people have died, a number of animals, of course. It's one of those things that horses, they have inoculation for, but humans, they apparently do not, at least I don't believe they do. I've listened in and been part of a number of conversations with the Health Officer, talked to a number of folks, PhDs, MSU, and the state, of course. The, first, let me describe how, what has to happen in order for you to get this. It's two different mosquitoes. One mosquito bites an infected animal and then bites a bird. A different kind of mosquito has to bite the bird and get infected from the bird. And it's different, EEE is different in that bird than it was in that horse. There's this transition that happens. So this different mosquito bites the bird and then has to bite you. Because the first mosquito doesn't really apparently like people to bite, it likes to bite animals and the other one apparently does. I, you know, much more than that. So it is very rare. I think some of the numbers that I hear out there are, I hear, you know, when you leave things to imagination or things are misstated clearly, people can become very concerned very quickly. You know, the 30% death rate on EEE, that's 30% of the people who contracted, which is like 1% of the population or less, it's like less than that. So it's, you know, if it was 1%, what is that? 30% that's 3/10 of a percent, not 30% of the people. Another way of looking at that, put it in perspective to what it is, to how one gets it. Nonetheless, we very much value human life and we're trying to protect folks. The state has said that they're not sure why we have a significant outbreak this year as opposed to years past, but they want a spray. Now, the product they're using, this product has been around for, you know, 50 years. I'm by far no expert on this sort of thing, insecticide. But at the same time, what I've been told is, it's been around for 50 years, has been proven reliable and safe, as any insecticide is. You would not, you'd want to stay out of the past, keep it off your body, shower clean, you know, take the, what we would consider normal precautions, as you would in trying to also not get bit by a mosquito. Use some deed, wear long clothes, stay indoors during evening hours there when they're most active. The spray, though, they are planning to spray here, just we've been waiting for the weather to break. And the area they're going to spray, intent is to two and a half miles from the area the animal died. So where they found a deer, where they found a horse that had died from EEE, triple E, is when they plan to spray. As that's described to me, I can see why that would cause concern, too. It's a twin-engine prop plane moving at 150 miles an hour, about 300 or 400 feet above the ground, as you can, and although they tell me you really can hardly discern that it's spraying because it's an aerosol, the concentration is so low that it basically is one liquid ounce covers one acre. Think about that a second. A shot glass to an acre. So that's very small. They tell me the concentration that will kill mosquitoes on contact. And it hovers in the air, this aerosol spray. But it doesn't, they're like, it should not have necessarily ill effects on larger bugs, if you will, like bees. Yet at the same time, they're taking precautions by saying they're not going to spray until, I think, 8 o'clock is the earliest, the idea being that it's dark and that bees are in the hive and, of course, they will notify property owners, they have put it in the, you know, it's on lines and the media in many areas. But it's, there's a location in Grass Lake and a location in Concord, where they're going to spray there. They haven't yet, but if it doesn't rain, they're going to do it. I know they sprayed some parts, the western part of the county earlier this week, I've been told. Questions?
Mike, I think you've got to realize the epidemiology of this, is that this wasn't around here a few years ago. And it's come from the south and it has progressed going north. And there really is no cure for it. You just treat the patient's symptoms and that's why a third of the people die. Okay? And I'm afraid that this is going to sneak up on us like HIV did, okay, or Ebola or something like that. And once it does, then it's too late. Okay? And so, because this is really more devastating. I mean, there's nothing you can do about it to help the people except treat their symptoms and they die.
Tony? Did you say that this insecticide does or does not kill bees?
And I'm told in the dose they use for this application for mosquitoes that no, it's too small a dose. They describe the mosquito as, you know, very small compared to the bee. But like, they've also said this insecticide can be used to kill, you know, all kinds of critters if you increase the dosage.
Okay, but the time of application, the assumption is that the bees won't be out, they'll be in their hives and
It'll be at night.
Not exposed?
Correct. And they tell us that this insecticide breaks down in the sunshine very quickly and the sun, and that you can spray an area with mud puddle and that the next day, you would not be able to find a trace in that mud puddle at this dosage because of the sun break it down as well too fast.
Further questions? Commissioner Elwell?
I read through one of the documents on it. I think about the bees, it says that once it dries to powder form, it won't harm the bees. But if it's wet still, it potentially could, and they recommended covering them. Mike, has it expanded beyond the original Townships, which are what, Concord and Grass Lake only? Or is there another Township?
Nope, that's the two in our county.
Okay. And there's no talk about it being anywhere else yet that we know of, correct?
No, we have no other animals that are in quarantine or to our attention as far as I'm aware, MSU.
Thank you.
Doctor?
Sorry, I'm getting old. I forgot what I was wanting to say.
I mean, but it is widespread, is what, 12 counties, I think, are currently involved?
Rodney?
Yes, is it still my understanding that people that call in can opt out of spraying their farm? I have a constituent that runs a, an all-natural farm that's organic and they call in very concerned about their farm and their farming capabilities with having it be sprayed, whether or not would be considered organic.
Actually, I'm told that is correct, that they need contact the state and the state will speak to the applicator and for the, depends obviously the size of the parcel of the property, for that two seconds they fly by that area, they would turn it off and then turn it back on. I think that for large parcels, I think that's very, probably very viable or possible, I'll say it that way. For small parcels of land, again, I'm no expert. I don't know how they turn it on and account for wind drift and everything else. There's a lot of variables they're already trying to account for, so.
Doctor?
Is there a way that we could, or there could be a release to the paper and they could write a report on it? Because I've had a number of people in my districts who have been concerned about the bees and that's probably because they just don't know, okay, the information. And if we got the information out to them, they would be more comfortable.
There is a way. We have it on our website. The state has it on numerous sites. It's on TV, it's on radio, and we have a report right here, right away. I see his pen moving.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks to our concerned citizens, I wanted, I will, I'll get you. There are two newspaper articles that have been sent and I will forward them to Commissioners from where it's been also documented in MLive. Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick questions for the Administrator. One, seeing that the two incidents that happened in our county is one in Concord on one side of the city and then the second incident on the complete opposite side of the county in Grass Lake, is there any concern for how far or any information on how far or how quickly those mosquitoes can travel outside of those areas? And is there any consideration for spraying outside of those two areas? Or do they think that the two miles that they plan on covering is going to suffice for how far they think those mosquitoes may have traveled, that they have had contact with this illness? And then, other question was concern for animals. I heard someone say at some point that animals should be in the house at the time during spraying. Is there any concern or health concern for animals with contact with the spray?
In regard to, because I had the same question, it's like, hey, it's on opposite ends of the county, what about all the stuff in between those two ends? And they've told me, no, that unless they find an infected animal, they are not going to spray anything beyond the two and a half mile radius around the particular location. I can't answer anything more, why that is exactly beyond that, I do not know. Because I tend to agree, you know, it's like mosquitoes fly around, but apparently they don't fly far enough. But the, as far as animals and all that stuff, they have said, yes, I think it's in all the media reports as well, that, you know, just as we, well, as some people spray for their gardens and lawns and different things for different grubs and different weeds and so forth, you should avoid your animals having contact with that. As Commissioner Elwell indicated, pointed out that, once it's dry, this substance, it's inert, they tell us it's inert, it's only when it's wet. And as I'm told, it's really when this thing sprays, it's, they call it, they use the word aerosol, it has to be. Think of an ounce covering an acre. It means it must be microscopic little droplets that are floating or in the air, which, like anything else, they will eventually settle out if the wind's not blowing. But, and then, of course, so they've said, if you are, one, that your dogs and animals are outside, you should probably bring them in that evening so they're not having to breathe it or let it land on them. Although they say in this concentration, it shouldn't have any effect on anyone or anything other than mosquitoes and maybe a flea or a tick or something, they said. But as well as, you know, I mean, I think if you have, you know, dog toys outside and stuff like that, I know you pick them up and throw them in the dishwasher, that's what we do with our dog toys and stuff. I don't have any little kids playing outside at this point, but, you know, my dog's squeaky toy, I want to wash it occasionally, too, so I'd recommend it.
I'll start with Darius and then Daniel.
And you may have mentioned this already, so if you did, I apologize, but was there an estimated time of spraying?
Yes, it's, it's, well, they won't start before 8 o'clock at night. It should be dark, they said.
Okay.
And they have already started spraying when the weather permits to the west of us, I believe. It's been raining here this weekend. I think they wanted to spray Sunday night, but rain wouldn't allow for it. So I'm sure it's coming relatively soon.
So anytime after 8?
Yes.
Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one last question for the Administrator. Administrator Overton, do you know if there's, or can we request that someone at the Health Department put together some type of infographic, both on the concerns of triple E as well as any concerns associated with the spray that is planning to take place?
We have and we've issued it out there. Yeah, so it's, it is available, it's online. And the state has, of course, quite a bit of material online as well from the, you know, the PhDs that are working on this, they have lots of literature. In fact, everything I'm saying is I either heard or read from one of the sources that the state or the Health Department has provided.
Further comments? Public comment? Commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn? Do you have a motion to support, all in favor? Opposed, duly carried. Thank you.